Okay, good evening. This is a continuation of the May 10th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session for negotiations and employment of employee. We have six Board members present and one Board member, Emily Bestido, is on teleconference. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. Tonight we have Kristen Whitehurst for public comments.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Whitehurst. I'm here tonight to ask the middle school task force and the Board to move forward with a common end of the day period for each of the middle schools for the start of the 2016-2017 school year. This is a year ahead of what looks to be the schedule being proposed by the middle school task force. But I don't think we should wait another year to do this because our kids are struggling now. This is what District Management Council is calling its Intervention Enrichment Block, although I think it can and should be much more than that. And I think it should be configured differently than what was outlined in DMC's March 22nd report to the Board. This period could easily be put into place following a schedule similar to what already occurs once a week at Sandberg for what it calls Extended Seminar. By taking four minutes off of eight periods, lunch would remain 30 minutes, we could find approximately 30 minutes for this period. What would it solve? For many years, I have heard from parents that their children in accelerated and reach math have had to forego lunch periods in order to meet with their math teacher. This year, I am aware that students were told to take makeup tests or quizzes in the lunchroom during lunch. How can students focus on taking tests or quizzes in the lunchroom? Have you been in the lunchroom? And lunch needs to be for lunch. It is the only unstructured time that our middle school children have during the day, the only time for them to socialize with friends, and for some, the only time to see friends who are on another team. And it should be for lunch, to eat, not to meet with a teacher. Also, for many years, students with IEPs where guided study is recommended have had to choose between getting extra academic help or being able to take a foreign language with their peers. I don't think students and their parents should have to make this choice. Students also miss out on other classes in order to take reading strategies. Again, why? Sandberg has found its Extended Seminar time to be a valuable time for students, all students, to meet with teachers to get extra help or to make up a test or quiz, or just to meet with a teacher. This extra period could also be used once per week for the small group band and orchestra classes, thus eliminating children being pulled out of other classes on a rotating and often confusing basis. One day a week could be used for students to meet with a counselor or social worker. For students who don't need to do any of the above, it would allow students to work in small groups, visit the library, or get a head start on homework. So you see, this isn't just an enrichment block for some students or an intervention block for others. This is something that could have an immediate positive impact on all of our middle school students. Last December, I had a long meeting with Michelle Fitzgerald and Linda Farrenbacher, representing not just my daughter and our family, but hundreds of middle school students and families regarding excessive homework and multiple tests and quizzes being given on the same day, in addition to crazy amounts of homework. We talked about the issues with makeup tests. Students coming to school sick because they didn't feel like they could ever catch up if they missed school. The stress and anxiety and negative self-worth our children are feeling as a result of the pressures being put on them by adults. Parents have told me that their children essentially didn't eat lunch during their entire middle school experience because they were meeting with teachers and didn't feel that they could. Others talked about their children having to miss out on or give up altogether extracurricular activities because of the amount of homework our kids have to do after school at home. Our children are suffering. Our middle school students are in school for more than seven hours a day, more if they come early for music, with at most, and only for some, a 30-minute break. With time spent to getting to and from school, they are gone for more than eight hours, and that doesn't include staying after school for additional help or other after-school activities. It's a long day for them, and then they go home to hours of additional homework. My daughter is 11. Is this really how we think our children should be living their lives? The current teacher's contract allows for teachers to have three planning periods in the middle school: an individual planning period, a common planning time, and a team academic support period. This additional period, at the end of the day, could fall nicely into this team academic support period under our existing contract. I am so disappointed in the DMC parent survey on many levels, including that the questions were leading and vague and incredibly similar to those in other DMC surveys given to other school districts across the country. But most of all, I am frustrated that the survey didn't provide nearly enough information for parents to make educated decisions. For all of these reasons, the results from a flawed survey have no choice but to be flawed themselves. And I found it irresponsible that Dr. Moyer's introduction pointed parents to the DMC presentation with no explanation regarding this option that I am discussing tonight. You may recall that Slide 27 includes the suggestion that District 205, quote, "Consider restructuring the student's schedule by either moving away from the double block of English Language Arts or making major changes to foreign language and/or unified arts." Now during Diane Ullman's presentation, she did a fair amount of backpedaling about that, and she stated on several occasions that Slide 27 included examples of what other districts have done with regards to an intervention enrichment period, and that these were not suggestions or recommendations, merely examples. Unfortunately, however, that isn't what the slide says. It states, "Consider restructuring the student's schedule," and the slide has never been changed. Whether that was intentional or an oversight or just a lack of thinking, that it is important, we will never know. But it may well have impacted a number of people and how they perceived this option on the survey, because most people I have spoken with would not be in favor of making those kinds of changes. So again, the quality of the survey renders its findings essentially useless. After the March 22nd meeting, I asked the representatives from DMC if parents could have input into the survey. It was clear to me from their reaction that they had no interest in having that happen. You see, they are not interested in collaboration or input or customizing their recommendations to the particular needs of a community. They are interested, in my opinion, in collecting their money, providing their cookie-cutter recommendations, and if they can, extend their contract or add to it, leaving town before anyone knows how students are impacted. For months, parents have been talking with Board members and district administration about our concerns regarding DMC, about who makes up DMC, about their sordid pasts, about how they operate. Someone has even gone so far as to create a website showcasing numerous newspaper articles from around the country where parents and community members, and sometimes Board members, are outraged at what is happening in their school districts because of DMC recommendations. But for the most part, our concerns have been met not with shared concern, but with defense of DMC. In fact, at that March 22nd Board meeting, in response to a question, Dr. Moyer even stated, "We," I mean, "DMC." The YouTube video from that meeting unfortunately didn't pick up the gas that resonated out there, or the comments that followed among the audience, because you see, DMC should not be Dr. Moyer's "we." Our children, who spend all of their days in school-related activities, should be his "we," and the parents and other taxpayers who pay his salary and whose property values are affected by the rise and fall of our schools should be his "we," and the teachers and staff and administrators with whom he should be collaborating and championing and respecting. They should be his "we." Unfortunately, we are not. We are not his "we." Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to reports and presentations. Our first presentation is the FCCLA State Competition. Wendy Albert.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Wendy Albert. I'm the Division Chair for Technology and Applied Arts at York High School. I'd like to thank the School Board for recognizing the accomplishments of our students this evening. I'd also like to thank our FCCLA teachers and advisors. We have Lori Foss, Lindsay Goldsmith, Ashley McDonough, Sarah Merrick, and Rachel Martin. I'd also like to thank the families of our students who've helped them with their competition preparations throughout the school year, and we're excited to congratulate our FCCLA students. So students, could you come on forward, please? And we're going to have you kind of form a line up here so that you're facing the camera. So come on down FCCLA students. As they are assembling, I'll give you a little bit of background about FCCLA. Family, Career, and Community Leaders is the nation's second-largest student leadership organization with nearly 200,000 active student members across the US. Students are enrolled in family and consumer science classes and then have the opportunity to become involved in the FCCLA Student Leadership Organization, allowing them to link their learning in the FCS classroom to their future families, careers, and going forward with their future studies. Through FCCLA, students develop leadership and life skills such as planning, goal-setting, problem-solving, decision-making, interpersonal communication skills, all necessary for success going forward in the home and workplace. The students before you have competed at the Regional and State STAR and Proficiency Event competitions, and student state medals are awarded based off of their overall score received by the student. So we do have some students, multiple students in a category that may receive the same medal. This encourages them to kind of do their personal best as they strive for the highest score in their competition. The students before you are being recognized for their success at the state-level competitions held in Springfield, Illinois this past April.
In the apparel construction event, students constructed semi-formal and casual dress garments. The judges score students on everything from fabric choice and overall appearance to construction details and the fit of the garment. Bridgette Strawbridge received a silver medal. Jolene Gundrum received a bronze medal. In the Fashion Construction STAR event, students design a fashion construction portfolio and present one constructed garment and fashion display for the judges. Madison Miller received a silver medal and a scholarship to the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising.
In the Fashion Apparel Display Event, students create a three-dimensional fashion display around a store profile and a special theme. Students also give an oral presentation addressing everything from target customer-market, specific merchandising goals, accessory and prop selection, and communicate their vision for how the display would be used within a store. Allison Peterson and Abby Templeman received gold medals in Fashion Apparel Display. In the Professional Career Image Event, students prepare a professional portfolio of coordinated work wardrobe for a one-week period. Students base their portfolio around an individual client specification and a given budget. Students also present one coordinated outfit to the judges. Katie Strawbridge received a silver. Oh, sorry, one more. In the Interior Design Competition, students create interior design boards to meet specific client specifications. Their boards include scaled floor plans, furnishings, samples, colors, and material swatches. Kima Baranik and Axana Batran received silver medals, and Allison Evans received a bronze
In the Children's Literature Presentation Competition, students select a piece of children's literature and develop an engaging, age-appropriate story. This presentation is delivered to a panel of judges and scored on everything from the delivery to visual aids, creativity, story interpretation, and lesson sequencing. Students tie their story to age-appropriate learning activities and objectives. Receiving gold medals in Children's Literature Presentation Senior category were Nora Barrett, Stephanie Reinike, Katie Rambo, and Elena Vesmar. And receiving silver medals, and most outstanding in the Junior category, were Emma Ryan and
In the Area of Culinary Arts, our students compete in several different categories. The first category are the state-level demonstration events, including pastry arts and food production. In the Pastry Arts Cookie and Cake Decorating Event, students design a cookie or cake around a specific theme. At the event, they decorate their cake or cookie in front of the judges and are scored on their decoration techniques and overall appearance and creativity of their project design. Samantha Fleisch, Juliana Geschi, and Nina Fabrizius received gold medals in cake decorating. Ally Geary received a gold medal in cookie decorating. In the Food Production Salad Event, students design a salad recipe at the competition, and at the competition, they prepare and plate the salad, including a table-setting display. They demonstrate skills including knife skills, plating skills, and menu planning. Rachel Atristain received a silver medal in salads. In the Food Production Relish Tray Event, students design a fruit or vegetable platter. Judges score them on knife skills and overall appearance, design, and creativity of their final relish tray. Kevin Homan received a gold medal in relish tray. The other category of events includes our national STAR level events. In the Sports Nutrition Event, students develop a nutrition and fitness plan to meet the needs of a competitive student athlete in a specific sport. Students present their plan for nutrition management through visual aids and an oral presentation to the judges. Caitlin Fisher received a silver medal in sports nutrition. And last but not least, our Culinary Arts STAR Events Competition. This is an intense iron chef-style, come on down, come on down, iron chef-style battle. Students are given a menu, and in their team of three, they have an hour to cook and plate the food for evaluation by the judges. Matt Carbone and Richard Incandella received bronze medals in culinary arts. And Richie, who was on his way here, but I don't think he's arrived yet, he also received a scholarship. Here it comes. Richie, come on down. Richie also received, Richie, we're on to the part where we're embarrassing you now. Richie also received a scholarship from Johnson and Wales University, where he will be studying culinary arts next year. So we're so proud of all of our students for their hard work and involvement in FCCLA this year.
I think we in the Board really look forward to the administration, really look forward to this night at School Board, because it really shows the diversity of passions and pursuits that our students show excellence in. And to the extent we can support these very diverse interests, I think we're a better community for it. These kids have shown true excellence, and they've made their community proud. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas FCCLA is a nonprofit national career and technical student organization for young men and women in family and consumer sciences education in public and private school through grade 12. And whereas the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Competition Award Program is acknowledged throughout the nation as a prestigious student recognition program in family and consumer science-related education. And whereas the FCCLA State Leadership Conference was held in Springfield, Illinois, April 7th through 9th, 2016, and the following York Community High School students are in top positions in the competition categories as noted. Apparel Construction: Silver, Bridgette Strawbridge, and Bronze, Jolene Gundrum. Children's Literature Presentation: Senior category, Gold, Nora Barrett, Stephanie Reinike, Caitlin Rambo, and Elena Vesmar. Children's Literature Presentation: Junior category, Silver, and Most Outstanding Distinction, Emma Ryan and Caitlin Templeman. Culinary Arts: Bronze, Matthew Carbone and Richard Incandella. Fashion Apparel Display Team: Gold, Allison Peterson and Abby Templeman. Fashion Construction STAR: Silver, Madison Miller. Food Production: Relish Tray, Gold, Kevin Homan. Food Production Salads: Silver, Rachel Atristain. Interior Design: Silver, Kima Baranik and Axana Batran. And Bronze, Allison Evans. Pastry Arts: Cake Decorating, Gold, Nina Fabrizius, Samantha Fleisch, and Juliana Geschi. Pastry Arts: Cookie Decorating, Gold, Alexandra Geary. Professional Career Image: Silver, Catherine Strawbridge. And Sports Nutrition: Silver, Caitlin Fisher. And whereas, Richard Incandla has received a scholarship from Johnson and Wales College of Culinary Arts in Denver, Colorado. And Madison Miller also received a scholarship from the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising in California. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, the faculty of the Family and Consumer Sciences Department, Wendy Albert, Division Chair of Technology and Applied Arts, Lori Foss, Lindsay Goldsmith, Sarah Merrick, Rachel Martin, and Ashley McDonough, can pronounce that one, for these outstanding achievements. Thank you. Okay, you guys, now I'll have to circle around and go through the gauntlet of handshakes. So if you can swing the line around and come through here, come this way, come this way. And then you have to, congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Glad you could make it. Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have the Junior Achievement, Chicago Titan. Thanks.
My name is Jim Burrell. I'm a business teacher at York High School, and we are very proud of the students that are standing in front of you tonight. We participated in the Junior Achievement Titan Competition down in Chicago that included other schools. We actually finished first and second place, and I guess the question is, what is Titan? So let's do a quick kind of overview of what Titan is. These students are in our Honors Business Management class, which is also a dual-credit class, are receiving college credits. It's a very difficult class. That's the theory side. Titan, we introduce because it's the practice side. So they actually run, it's an online business simulation where they make decisions as to what to change price, how much to charge for a fictitious product called a hollow generator. They decide how much money to put in marketing. They decide how much money to put in capital investment, research and development, and their goal here is to have the most retained earnings, which is the goal of most companies. And so the team with the most retained earnings generally wins. Now, you have to put some money towards marketing, so the nice thing is that it's not just the theory side, it's actually a practice side. So the kids actually get really about an hour or so when we do a simulation of running a company, and there's a computer program that ranks really first to last. And fortunately, we finished first and second at the competition. Lyons Township had three, so it was us, we were first and second, pretty much pretty far ahead of the three teams from Lyons Township. They are in our conference, by the way, but we did really well, and these kids got a lot to be proud of. Junior Achievement is a great program that we've been involved with, and I want to introduce Rich Rosenberg. Rich Rosenberg, if you live in Elmhurst, you know Rich Rosenberg. He is a spectacular human being. He comes in and volunteers his time to our Junior Achievement, you know, pretty much every semester. So we have fall semester and spring semester, and I just thought, you know, I'd give you a chance because you're just amazing. Rich helps us every, so he comes in and kind of explains the simulation, and then our kids take it from there. So you want to say what you want to say?
Thank you. I am actually here to recognize these winners, but celebrate every student in Jim's class. Mr. Burrell puts together a program and a class structure that allows for learning and allows for what I consider to be one of the most important skills I ever learned in college, and that was critical thinking. Critical thinking, in my mind, means that you're given a problem, you're given a circumstance, and you have to pick all the choices that you might be able to create. And from those, you have to then pick what will work and how it will work. The difference here is that we're doing it in team play, small groups. We're doing it in twos and threes. We're doing it in the whole classroom simultaneously, critically thinking through problem-solving of six or seven elements of any particular moment, whether it's price or structure or production, et cetera. You're also doing it in a timed environment, so that you have time, you have team play, you have critical thinking, you have observation, you have decision-making, and these kids just happen to be outstanding and won the competition. But every kid in Mr. Burrell's class wins in this group. So to you, sir, thank you. To your students, awesome. Way to go, guys.
Thank you so much. Welcome. You're welcome. Excellent. I get to read something. Well, I just want to echo John's point too, about how much we value the richness of our curriculum just beyond the three Rs and how impressive it is to see all of you tonight doing more than just the basic, and what a great, what a great thing it is to have that woven into the fabric of an Elmhurst education. I'd also especially like to thank all the mentors in the various Junior Achievement programs. I mean, without you guys, we're not here, so thank you. And finally, I'd like to catch you afterwards. I need a few tips. So for the business I'm running now. Let me read this for you. Proclamation. Whereas Junior Achievement of Chicago is an educational nonprofit organization bringing financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship programs into classrooms from kindergarten through high school. And whereas JA Titan challenges students to apply their knowledge of business as they compete online in the highly competitive industry of the fictional hollow generator, designed to support the skills and competencies identified by the Partnership for 21st Century Skills. And whereas this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students by encouraging them to run a virtual manufacturing company, master five key business decisions: price of product, production levels, marketing expenses, research and development costs, and capital investment level, to earn the largest amount of retained earnings. And whereas, according to Rich Rosenberg, a local business owner who has volunteered for 11 years in the business class at York Community High School, the Chicago Titan Competition creates a critical-thinking environment where complex interrelated decisions are made by students in small groups. Dependent upon each other, the students learn through shared decisions and time-compressed computer-supported business cycles, an amazing course study evaluating options and opportunities. And whereas, on April 15th, 2016, at the Junior Achievement Titan Competition in Chicago, the following York students placed as noted. First-place team, A.J. Jane, Jordan Less, Garrett Gilmartin, and Megan Boyle. And second-place team, Lance Lucos, Matthew Finan, and Brennan McGovern. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and the faculty of York Business Department, Jim Burrell, Chair, and volunteer Rich Rosenberg, for these outstanding achievements. Thank you. And we'll do the same weave here. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Thanks for the opportunity. This is awesome.
Just be noted that we are fashion-coordinated. I'm going to be there with you. Good evening, my name is Ken Ross and I'm the Department Leader for Industrial Technology at York. And I'm here to present to you with Joe Stolz, Ron Roback and Dan Callenberg, who couldn't be here tonight, some of the achievements of our Skills USA kids this year. But as always, I want to first start off by saying thank you to Dr. Moyer, his administration, the school board, and Ms. Diana Smith and her administration at York for giving us the opportunity to have such wonderful programs at the high school. There's not many schools out there that do what York High School does in all the areas that you've seen tonight. One of the first things that I wanted to talk about, and kind of a little background for everybody, Skills USA has been around since 1964. It's a high school and college organization, so the students that are in Skills in high school continue on in college. We have 300,000-plus members in the United States. During Nationals, we compete against 54 states and territorial associations. So it's kind of a big deal when you go to Nationals. Winning state's pretty cool, but going on to Nationals, that's some big time. But I had a couple of stats here that I wanted to share with you real quick. And this really says it's a, a statement about Elmhurst and York. In order to compete at state in Skills USA, you have to take a written test in February against everybody else in the state of Illinois. And it's a raw score, so if a competition only has 10 spots, top 10 go. If it has 30, top 30 go. So, you know, we all like numbers, so I thought I'd throw some together for you here today. We had 54 students take the test in February. 28 of them qualified for state. That means there was a lot of schools in the state of Illinois were disappointed this year. Because we sent, well, all right, do the math around half? Pretty close. All right. So, you saved me for last. That's what you get. So if you notice in the program, we competed in collision repair technology, principles of physics technology, technical drafting CAD, auto service technology and screen printing technology. So at the end of the day, we brought home seven state medals in five different competitions and had three students place first in state. Which means those three students in June are going to be representing York, the city of Elmhurst and District 205 at the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky from June 20th to the 25th. And I've been there, it's cool. And so basically, I just wanted to recognize our students because when you read the proclamation, I don't want to say the same thing. But winning here at state in Skills USA, there's a lot of industry that's out there that's looking for this. They're looking for our students who compete and, and, and some really cool stuff that they can do. One little note, Mr. Stolz and Mr. Callenberg, through their efforts, we swept state in technical drafting CAD. We took first, second and third. And I make this joke every year, but I'm not lying. Toward halfway through the award ceremony, you know, you hear people and they go, "Technical drafting CAD, first place, York, second place, York." And then people just start going, "Again." And that makes us really proud. So, well, come on. And so for our kids, it's, it's a great opportunity. We're very, very appreciative of what our students do and they're awesome. So, thank you and thanks to our kids who do a great job.
Well, Ken just told me no pressure, but how can you follow that? How can you follow that? So the only thing I will say is that this is excellence. This talks about our diversity of roles and how every student, every student can excel given the opportunity, given the options and given great mentors. So this is excellent. Whereas, the Skills USA state competition is acknowledged as a prestigious student recognition program in industrial arts education, which provides quality education experiences for students in leadership, teamwork, citizenship and character development, in addition to promoting community service. And whereas, this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages schools to establish industry standards for job skills training in the classroom. And whereas, the following York Community High School students earned medals in the competition categories on April 21st through 23rd, 2016 in Springfield, Illinois, as noted. Auto service technology, Jeremy Olson, third place. Collision repair technology, Michael Falco, first place. Principles of Engineering, Paige McIntyre, first place. Screen printing technology, Jacob Windell, second place. Technical drafting CAD, Jack...
Chisleck.
Chisleck, thank you. First place, Abigail Gundrum, second place. And Stephanie...
Stephanie Trey.
Trey, third place. And whereby placing first in their competition, Michael Falco, Paige McIntyre and Jack...
Chisleck.
Chisleck. Will be representing York Community High School at the National Skills USA Competition and Conference this June in Louisville, Kentucky. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, to the community, to their parents, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, the faculty of the Industrial Technology Department, Wendy Albert, Division Chair for Technology and Applied Arts, Ken Ross, Department Leader, Dan Callenberg, Ron Roback and Joe Stolz for these outstanding accomplishments.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Everybody say, "Nice medal, Mike."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, I got it at 9:00 to get out here or something?
Did somebody bump into her or something, or we lost her?
I did.
Yeah, eight. Do you have her email or your phone number?
I got her number here.
Yeah. Eight, one. Yeah. Go.
We're going to move on with our student achievement objectives. Thanks, everybody. Oh.
Okay. She's on.
Okay. We're set. Oh, she just texted me.
Okay, moving on to student achievement objectives. Dave?
Okay. Jim Wohl, Dr. Wohl and Charles Brandl will provide an update on the work of the Joint Committee. And the gist of what they're going to explain to you is what we've been doing throughout the course of this year to get to this point where we can now have a final plan that complies with the new state laws that require us to include student growth and teacher evaluations.
Hey, good evening. So as Dr. Moyer explained, I'm here to give you a, and Jim and I are here to give you a quick update on the work of the PARA committee. The PARA law is the law governing the incorporation of student growth measures into teacher evaluation. And one component of that law is the requirement of the formation of this joint committee to come up with a plan for each district. Unlike some laws where they tell us what we have to do and how we have to do it, PARA basically tells us what the end product has to be, sets some constraints around that and then leaves it up to us to come up with a plan of how to accomplish that in our district. In District 205, we actually ended up needing to come up with three different plans, four different levels, depending on what assessments were in place, what work had already been done. So a summary, a quick summary of each one. At Madison, as you can imagine, an early childhood assessment looks very different than it does at the high school where you're sitting down filling in bubbles in a sheet. Madison has an extremely well-thought-out structure of observational assessments that they use to monitor the growth of students, and they've been doing that for years. So it made sense to take advantage of that, so those are measures that we're incorporating into their student growth measure. And they're actually measures that we've been using with the administration at Madison for the past couple of years for the administrative student growth measure. At the elementary and middle school levels, we're going to be using MAP, and that actually will change over time, which Jim will talk about in a couple of minutes. But for now, we're using MAP measures in reading math. And again, that is a very similar measure to what we're using for the administrative growth measure at the elementary and middle school levels. The high school looks a little bit different. They have, each course team has identified growth standards that they're going to monitor and taken questions from their final exams and mirrored those back into a baseline assessment so that they can monitor growth over those standards for that course during the course of the year. So each course has its own standards and those look different from course to course, but the structure that they're going to use to measure that growth is the same across all of those courses. And I think Jim is going to take over and talk about how we take that student growth measure and then actually incorporate that into the overall teacher evaluation.
So part of our work in PARA, one of the things that we needed to make sure we had was a plan in place. And teacher evaluations will now be, their summative rating will be comprised weighted 70% on teacher professional practice and 30% on student growth measures. Had we not had a plan in place, in the fall, we would have had to default to the state model, which would have been 50% teacher professional practice and 50% student growth. And so the committee is, is actually quite pleased that we've been able to accomplish the writing of a plan that at least gets us off the ground. The committee will continue to meet and make modifications to the plan as necessary, as long as we stay within the guidelines that we've been given. This is a little bit of background on what has happened, where the starting, where the plan started. The Joint Committee officially began meeting in November because once the committee meets, it has 180 days to complete the plan. So prior to November of this past year, the committee was meeting unofficially to do a lot of the groundwork in the development leading up to the development of the final plan. As a part of this, you'll see from the chart that we have a progression and a timeline laid out. So our goal is to have all levels, the elementary levels replacing the MAP testing with their own Type II assessments, mirroring the work of the high school that's already been completed. So we actually have growth data then within specific objectives across subject areas and grade levels. One of the things that you should be aware of is the plan was designed together as the committee to kind of err in the favor of the teacher. Because we are using MAP data for the first couple of years at the elementary and the middle school, we wanted to ensure that we had accuracy of our data. So what we did was take existing MAP data and we ran it through the matrices that will determine the percentage and the rate of growth for students that'll be used to calculate the student growth measure for incorporation into the teacher evaluation. And we did that intentionally to show what it could look like for teachers once student growth measures come into play within their evaluation. And what we found was that it, it does not have a significant impact for the teacher, that it really is our student growth measures historically are in a place that really work in favor of the teacher. And so as we refine and develop the plan moving forward, we're very confident that our measurements will have the desired outcomes that comply with the law, but also continue to push the district in the measures of developing accurate assessments for student growth based on curriculum objectives. So that's what we have, that's where we are. We've actually been out at multiple buildings doing presentations similar to this with a few added details for the teachers. We're about halfway through and we have meetings, we started yesterday morning, we have one every day this week at schools. We will be done by the 20th of May with all of our presentations. It's been very well received and we have a feedback link set up for any questions from teachers. They have access to all of the plans that were created and they can email committee reps directly from this presentation that we share with them, slightly more detailed than this one. And those questions will be posted to a frequently asked questions document. And then all those questions will be jointly answered by the committee and shared out with all staff so that all feedback is present for all questions to all staff within the district. So we feel we have a very solid process that was collaboratively designed.
The one question that I have is moving forward as Park becomes more prevalent, is there a plan to move from MAP to Park if we need to?
At this point, we would not look at Park as being an accurate growth measure for measuring our student growth. We need two points of assessment in order to accommodate. So we need a pre-assessment and a post-assessment. And Park is a once-a-year assessment tool at this point in the spring. And our measurement data will be taken in the fall for incorporation into teacher evaluation summative documentation.
Was it thought then that we'll always have MAP to help with this?
MAP, MAP, the goal is after the first two years that we will not be using MAP to measure student growth anymore for the purpose of inclusion in teacher evaluations. We will have local Type II and eventually Type III assessments that will be used for measuring student growth.
So the last question is, just for lack of, you know, not understanding how this all fits in statewide, so we're using local assessments, how do we look at like best practices across the state or, you know, comparable districts, et cetera? Is any of that considered or is that something to think about?
Because local assessments are written and developed locally pertaining to specific curricular objectives and learning outcomes, districts can choose to use different objectives or learning outcomes. So there's really no way to compare objective to objective unless a district happened to look at the same particular objectives that are being measured within their school district for that particular grade level of child. So this would be local assessment data generated and used to monitor our growth within our district.
So once again, you know, truly looking at growing our students, which is key. Thanks. And all of our students, yeah.
I guess just the question to build on what Karen was saying, though, you know, so EPAS is going away, right? And MAP is what we were using because it articulated into the ACT ultimately. And so the intention is for the local assessments to basically link to the same kind of path that we're talking about? I'm just saying, what are you, what are you going to use in place of EPAS? And how do we, you know, we give a test for Park, and then you give a test for a local assessment, and then there's some articulation through the ACT scores?
Well, there's articulation in the sense that they're tied to the same or similar standards. You know, EPAS is going away. One of the things we're trying to do is to move away from a reliance on purely external assessments and build some quality internal assessments that we can use to monitor our progress, to monitor growth. So kind of circle back to this MAP going away, you know, MAP may not completely go away, but what we'd like to be able to do is reduce our reliance on that, that we've got some internal measures that are really directly tied to our curriculum, tied to the standards that we're teaching, so that we're not taking a day away from instruction and doing assessment, that that, that assessment is actually a part of this instruction that's happening. So it doesn't, we don't stop teaching, give an assessment, and then try to restart teaching. It's all a part of a flow. And to do that, we need to have those strong internal assessments.
And again, that, I think I, we've been through this a few times, so I just want to make sure that everybody's clear, that, that it's not another test. So when we re-architect this internally, this is a measure of progress and achievement that ultimately leads to, you know, our ACT scores, which are the measurement that we've picked as a KPI. Right? And so, so that's all embedded in the way we teach absent the legislators deciding how we should do it. And then the Park is something that we just layer on on top because we have to. But that's it. I mean, we're not adding, you know, there's not MAP and then Park and then some kind of EPAS assessment and then something, I mean, I'm just, it's the whole testing question about how often do we test and...
Well, and again, to kind of go back to what I was saying earlier, that really is part of the intent of this work, the assessment work that we've been doing, is to become less reliant on those external tests so that we don't have to give as many of them.
Right.
So that we can peel back some of those layers and know that our internal assessments are linked to those big, important college entrance exams, those kinds of pieces, and our assessments give us a good glimpse of how students are progressing. We don't have to give another external assessment to have a gauge of that.
Right. Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that, because this looks on its surface like...
Yeah, it's another thing layered on top.
There's another layer of tests.
And the idea is that it's actually not layered on top, it's embedded within.
Yes.
And it actually helps us peel off a couple of layers that are there now.
Okay. That was a point.
Thank you. Middle School Task Force update.
Yeah, actually, we have one more.
Oh, there's another, I'm sorry. Hold on, I apologize, there's one more, one more thing for student achievement objectives.
Right. So part of the MLI implementation and part of the future-ready types of skills and concepts that we're trying to get embedded into what we do involves a move from traditional textbooks to what we call dynamic resources. And we are consciously using that term because we don't want to view this solely as like a digital textbook substituting for a paper textbook. So this, that term is used intentionally, and I'm sure Chris will explain that a little bit, but Dr. Covino is going to present now on the high school plan to, to implement that concept and move away from traditional textbooks.
Thank you. So what I'm going to show you here in the next couple of minutes, it really has, it has three pieces. It is, as Dr. Moore said, our plan to move from print resources to digital resources generally in the building and in all courses eventually, to showcase, and really I'll deal with this very briefly at the beginning, new texts for next year that I believe you will be getting documentation for and are sitting on a public display table, I think right now. Yeah, okay. And for next year. And then to give you just a little bit of feedback, I know that there has been some already, but about specifically related to how students are interacting with digital texts and with their Chromebooks in a digital environment. So I'll jump right first to just next year's texts, and, and I'm sure there will be questions about many of these, but what you'll see, and it's kind of a nice lead-in, I put a little D next to each one of the texts for next year that is a, a digital text. And I know that if you're looking at it on your screens, I've jumped ahead like seven slides, I just, I rearranged it 20 minutes ago, thank you, David Smith. So the English texts, based on some of their work that they did with the ELA CDT, use as many acronyms as I can, Dr. Fitzgerald, really called for some more nonfiction texts at the high school level, so except for one, their Streetcar Named Desire, you'll see that they're mainly a nonfiction text. In the math department, with the addition of the pre-calc course that we discussed earlier this year, there's a addition of a text for that class, but this is one that we found to be great. The, the business math class that we've had for, for many years is moving to an online version of their text. And then really every text after that, all the way down to the bottom, are digital in nature, except for the ACP ones, which Indiana University has not yet allowed us to move to digital, though we are in conversation with them about that. So these are the texts that you'll see documentation for based on the, the request that we typically give you about this time of year. As far as digital texts, though, are concerned, and Dr. Moore did allude to this, I want to give a little bit of a definition. Really, when we started the mobile learning initiative 18 months ago, we decided that a foundational vision had to revolve around agility, access, and agency. Really, that students can make, become more agile learners in the classroom. We wanted to create opportunities through technology to develop agency and provide access to information for both teachers and students and among classmates in the educational process. And one of the ways that we can do the, the second prong there, or the third prong to build access, is through the type of resource we put in the hands of students on a daily basis. There are really two types that we're talking about here. One is a digital text, and that's a little bit more traditional in nature because truly it's static. It is a digital version of the print text that they already have. It does not change with the environment, it does not change from year to year sometimes. Some, some texts do, but most of them don't. So that's one that, that we're looking at. But it does allow for a greater access and usability on the part of the student, and it provides a little, there, there are features within many digital texts that, that provide students with capabilities that they wouldn't necessarily have with print text. So we like digital texts, but what we really are looking for are more open source, dynamic texts. These are texts, as in this definition, which are designed and curated by teachers and course teams. Right? These texts, and really now using the term quite loosely, change with the demands and curriculum of the course. Dynamic texts allow a course team, as it says, to quickly respond to students' needs, providing them support and/or enrichment. So we really feel like this is the move that we'd like to make going forward. It just takes a lot of time and a lot of effort on the part of the course teams to make sure that the text they put in front of kids is a good text. So that's what, that's, that's the direction generally that we're moving. Give you just a couple of numbers, because I was asked to give you a couple of numbers. This year, in 2015-16, we started the year with 29 courses using a digital or an open source text. I have 42 up there right now because now, by the end of the year, there have been many courses that while they had a print text at the beginning, they've transitioned through the, I think, exceptional leadership of our instructional technology coaches and some of our department chairs, to digital texts in addition to their paper texts, which they will then be pushing off to the side. That accounts for about 33% of all courses using a textbook in our building right now. So we're at about 33% transition right now. At the end, not even the end, though we do graduate in a few days, we'll see you all there. At 33% right now. Next year, with the additions that I'll show you in just a second, we'll have 53 courses, 43% of all courses, then 63 at 51% and 68. Now, these numbers are based on what course, course teams and department chairs have been working on over the last few months. What you should know about these numbers is that they're lower than they may be in the future because they include no English paperback books, so, and they include very few, actually only two, books from the mathematics department. And I'll get to that in just a second. So there are 25, 27, 28 total texts in the English department that are used, courses that use a textbook, and in the math department approximately 17 that are paper right now, and we don't have a definitive plan for their transition because of a couple of reasons, which I will cover briefly here. But that's, that's generally sort of our growth plan for the next few years. Keeping in mind, though, that as we work towards digital and dynamic texts, we do have a digital presence in every classroom right now. And that continued digital resource conversation about how to move more of our resources into a digital format or a dynamic format are going to take place during late start meetings, course team planning periods, but specifically, and want to give a nod to Debele and her work here, the D205 university courses, specifically the MLI 200 and the MLI 301 course, which we have, I think, already filled for the summer and we may be opening another one. But that 301 course is designed specifically to teach teachers how to make digital, actually dynamic text, not the digital text, dynamic text. So we're hoping to get as many course teams involved in that as possible. In fact, the entire FCCLA contention that was up here earlier, they're working with Katie and Jill Heaton and Debold to, to make all of their classroom resources dynamic by hopefully the beginning of next year. That's, that's really the goal, which was great. Just a couple of things about the way that students are experiencing learning in this digital environment, and I just love this graphic. If you just look at the, the green, what's, what's happening, what we're seeing more of, you know, lecture, less than, collaboration is skyrocketing. This is 887 students at York who reported on a number of ideas here. If you read our school newspaper, you would have seen some of these graphs already because they were in there. Having more choices, looking at the numbers that are now more frequently communicating with teachers, and then that number about research, which is really an indicator of how we're doing with student agency, is skyrocketing, and then also connecting to what they do outside of school. So we're already seeing a growth, a sort of shift in, in the direction of more frequent collaboration, choice, research, and connection, which, you know, is, is really what we wanted to see from the beginning. Just thinking about comfort as well, over 90% of our students said that they felt comfortable using their Chromebooks within a few weeks of the year beginning. Interesting to look at the breakdown on the left side, that fewer seniors felt comfortable than freshmen, which means that digital divide is even a divide among the four years in high school. So, and we anticipate that the freshmen coming in after at least almost two years, I think, now working in the middle schools will be even more comfortable. And then this one, I think, speaks specifically to using those digital resources at home. Our teachers are actually assigning, so say the students, about 75% of teachers are assigning multiple times a week work to be done with the Chromebooks, reading resources that they've put out there through Blogger or Classroom or Google Sites, which are the three ways that we control the workflow in the digital environment right now. So these are kind of just interesting numbers that we'll use kind of as a baseline as we track progress over time. And then this one speaks directly to the, the digital resources themselves. Based on three questions that we asked, we basically broke down that about 25% of our student body wants paper. Right? These are kids who say, if you give me a choice, I want a, I want a book in my hands. So we're still, we still have, you know, we have to think about our audience, and we still know that 25% of our audience feels like paper is the way I want to go, while 75% feel like digital is the way they'd like to go. Many of them cite the weight of the books is gone, you know, and they have a number of courses where all they have is their Chromebook and maybe a reader or a workbook, and, and that's very beneficial. So here's our basic three-year plan. In bold and with an asterisk is, is every course we're looking at for the next three years that will move into a, into a dynamic format. The other ones, non-bolded, are ones that will just adopt a digital version of its current text. So you'll see for next year, down the first column on the left, all of the courses that will be moving to digital texts, and then down the middle column, all of them for next year that will be adopting that digital format. Ones like Health, Drivers Ed, Intro to Athletic Training, these are courses that currently have a class set where kids can access the books, but they'll, they're actually curating those texts to find resources and make their own digital texts over the course of the next three months. 1718 is on the right side, as well as 1819. Proud to say that the 1819 numbers, there you'll see a lot of science classes, that is 90, it makes for 98% of all science classes will be in a digital format by 1819, all except for med careers, which really can't be in a digital format because it's mostly hands-on practical work, but they do have some resources that the, that we're required to use. And then you'll see in 1718, moving back to the middle, that we have a number of courses in the history department that will be moving in that direction as well, specifically the advanced placement courses. We're very excited about those. Thinking about those two departments I mentioned earlier, the English department, 25 courses with consumable texts, we call them because they don't sell them back, and those three ACP courses which have textbooks, we're thinking about these three things as we make transitions to digital, a digital text, you know. So how do we prepare students to record their thoughts and reflect on their reading in text? You know, we typically call that annotation, I'm not sure it's necessarily annotation anymore, but we do want students to be able to think critically while they're reading, and we want them to be able to demonstrate that they're doing so. So we have to come up with a solution that allows the medium for making that communication match the intent of the assignment. Right now, the Chromebook doesn't serve that purpose as well as it could, so we're, we're trying to work on some of those fixes, and it is a top priority of our industrial, I always say, instructional technology coaches working within the English department. We need to prepare students to read and respond to text as they will be expected to in college in the workplace. So this notion of I'm going to write notes in my book might be an outdated concept, but it, it might not, depending on where you go to school or what you, you do for a living. So we're exploring that as well, and the conversation, or the conversion, or the conversation about digital text, sorry about that, will occur in shifts as we sort of answer and reflect on those two questions. That's our goal. And, you know, a reading off of a Chromebook or a reading off of a laptop might not necessarily be, you know, the easiest thing in the world, which is probably what those 25% of students who say they like paper might be thinking of first, so we're going to have to work through that. We are very, very excited about the CDT process with math this summer, helping us investigate digital options for those math books. And I have to say that the Park testing a couple of weeks ago was one of the, was, was one, there was a lot of caution shown by our department as students struggled reading some of the things on that test on their screens in the same way that they might do with digital, in a digital format. So as we think through what the complications are of transitioning sort of images and graphs and sort of real-time pieces in math books to a digital environment, we'll be moving towards those more dynamic texts. We are looking to a couple of model schools, which we have identified, Naperville 203 is probably the one that we think is most outstanding right now, that have started making that transition across their math department to digital texts using WikiSpaces, which is a really nice, nice clean way to do it. My last piece got cut off on that slide there, but if you see it on your screen, our World Languages Department will continue to use workbooks and readers, and all of the Chinese texts are not available in digital format. So until they get there, they'll still be with paper. But other than these three areas, English, math, and some of the language, everything is, is sort of making that transition relatively rapidly. And this was the last piece I was asked to present to you, a sort of a revised bookbag study for, that we, we gave one at the beginning of the MLI initiative to talk about the costs of books and some potential savings over time. You know, we've talked about sort of developing agency and making bookbags lighter and everything, but, you know, what's the actual financial cost as well? And Chris, I hope you like this, both of you, actually. So we, we took the average bookstore sale price, so the average, so I'm just, want to give the overview. And we are considering, in what you're about to see, the existing 70%, 70% buyback. So you're not going to see that big, huge cost of a book because we know that the families are getting the money back anyway, right, for the buyback. We, though, when it's digital and new, we're adding the, the markup that the bookstore typically adds, and what you're seeing in the next couple of slides does not include any course fees whatsoever, it is purely about books. And then there is one column in the graph that says elective, and you should know that they are representative of the most commonly taken elective by students at that grade level. And I have two different profiles for you, a college-bound student, generally college-bound, and one that is trying to get to a highly selective school. So you can sort of see those two differences. Call this BCB, Before Chromebooks. So you're looking at 2011 through, or 2012 through 2015, the graduating classes. Right? And each year, those are the costs of, of the texts in those classes. So just to think about the freshman year, $27 for their English book, 27 for a geometry book, 24 for a world studies book, 33 for biology, Spanish II was 63, Intro to Business is the most often taken elective by freshmen, and Health at $23 for a grand total freshman year of $226. You see that across the board with the, sort of the average numbers there. Comes out to a total cost over four years with the 70% buyback of about $708 for textbooks alone. If we look after Chromebooks, you'll see that there are a number of those that went down to zero because they are in a digital format... down to zero because they are in a digital format, or they're in a dynamic resource format, or the cost of the digital resource is less than the cost of the original text if we think about multiple-year licensing. So the cost savings, a difference of about $240 over the 2012 through 15 number, this is the 17 through 20 number, if we started, as we have started next year, this year really. I know you have those in front of you, so I will jump quickly to the before Chromebooks for the highly selective college bound, and you'll see a change in the price. They are, it's more expensive actually to take the highly selective courses than the others, but this is before Chromebooks, so 2012 through 15, a total cost of $910 for a student. But after Chromebooks, because probably as you saw, many of those advanced placement classes and the honors classes were on that list to transition, we are actually looking at a cost difference of about $400 before and after the Chromebooks. You'll see a lot of zeros in there as well because of the move to a dynamic text format. And that's the whole report. No big bang at the end, I apologize. Thank you.
Chris, thanks for sharing a bunch of different subjects as updates for us, we appreciate it. I have a few questions. One is with respect to the 25% of the students that were looking at paper. It sounded like you were, and the team is working on, how do we easily transition those students? And what specifically were they referring to? The English, you know, reading books, et cetera? So that's kind of the first question.
So we don't know what books they were specifically referring to. This was a general survey of, like I said, almost 900 kids, about 880-some kids across all four grade levels. So we will be able to sort of drill that down over time, but it was really our only and first initial survey, and we did want to wait till the end of this year to be able to have a long enough experience so that students could intelligently comment on their experiences this year. So we'll get to that, yes.
Thank you very much. The second piece is, I know that there's other districts that have been working on mobile learning initiative for a long time, or they're ahead of us, let's say, so that framing it. It sounds as though, since you referenced District 203, are we looking, is the team looking at what other districts are doing, you know, so that we don't reinvent the wheel?
Absolutely, and 203 was really only a reference to math, which came up at a department chair's conference that Dr. Brown went to a few weeks ago, and immediately came back very excited and shared it with our ITCs. But David Smith and Drew McGuire and I are all in contact with other schools that are a year or two ahead of us in this process and are looking to see what they're doing.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Middle School Task Force, Michelle, Katie.
First of all, I'll just introduce a couple of the people that are up here, and then have our principals introduce some of their teachers too. Katie Padberg, who is the Elmhurst Teachers Council President and middle school teacher, obviously has been involved in the process, and then Michelle Bowles, who's a middle school math teacher at Bryan, is the actual co-chair of the Middle School Task Force. And so Gina Polgrieder is the principal at Churchville, Jackie DeCipio is the principal at Bryan, and then Linda Farrenbacher is the principal at Sandberg, and I will ask them to introduce their teachers who are here with us tonight.
Okay, I have Dr. Carrie Imrickson here, she's school psychologist.
In addition to Michelle Bowles, I have Michelle Kalcheck from our PE department as well.
Okay, thank you. So Katie is going to explain the purpose of the Middle School Task Force.
Who's got the?
Which one?
First slide.
Oh, you're good. Dave usually.
Oh, you got it, Dave? You got it? Okay. All right. And the purpose of the task force originally came about in discussions during negotiations, and between the teachers and the management team, one of the ongoing topics that came up was the fact that we had not had a middle school study since 2008, and there really had not been any major changes made to all three middle schools since that point in time. Through hours of conversation, it was decided by both parties at the negotiation table that this should be something that should be addressed more in-depth by all three middle schools and not just the negotiation team itself. And so the basic purpose of the task force is to look at three things. One, to look at best practice and to look at actual research-based best practices for learning and teaching. The second purpose of the Middle School Task Force was to look at the individual needs of the students, and also taking into account that we have three middle schools and we needed some level of consistency between all of, all three. Because while all three have certain personalities and traditions, by the same token, we wanted to have the same basic objectives and the same instructional practices overall for students attending all three schools. And the third purpose for the Middle School Task Force was to make sure that as we were making those changes, we did it in a thoughtful way, and that we communicated all those changes to everybody involved, from the teachers, the kids, the parents, to the school board, and that we were open about what we believed was important in terms of making those changes as we saw fit within the Middle School Task Force.
So we're going to take teen this a little bit, and Katie and Michelle are going to speak to a couple of things on this slide, but primarily, the big thing is that I wanted to make sure that people understood that. We did explain this to the middle school teachers, and we did that in September, but we had a process for selecting the representation of the task force, I wanted to make sure that Michelle explained how that worked.
Okay, so the ETC went through a list of over 30 volunteers and picked teachers in all subject or content areas, many of them having 10 years or more of experience working in our district. We chose six people from each of the three middle schools, and in doing so, we were able to cover math, English, science, social studies, world language, unified arts, PE, music, special education, gifted, reading strategies, instructional tech coaches, librarians, and psychologists. So we believe we have chosen a great group of people with an abundance of knowledge, who are willing to have open dialogue, work hard, and make positive changes for our middle school children.
Once the task force was chosen, we went forward and went into all three middle schools and brought forth what our game plan was, so to speak, and what the Middle School Task Force was looking to accomplish with their help and their input. So we did that. Our first meeting then was a month later in October when we met for the first time as a group with the Middle School Task Force, and that was our initial meeting, and we're going to talk a little bit about each of the study sessions that we did prior to the actual DMC focus group interviews, which was also kind of going on at the same time.
Sure. So the focus group interviews in November were part of the, we'll explain a little bit about some of these things in greater detail a little bit later, but the focus group study that occurred in November was a three-day process, had over 100 various different stakeholders, from parents to teachers to special education teachers, administrators, various different core content, paraprofessionals, a very wide swath of people were involved in the focus group. And then the, on the next slide, in January, District Management Council conducted a time study, it was a week-long time study at all three middle schools. And then some of the other points on this slide, there's, we're going to go into a little more depth as we move along. And I will say multiple times here, but we do have a website that's going to go live that just has information about the various different committees that exist in the district. And on the Middle School Task Force page, the full study, all of those types of things will be posted, there'll be another opportunity for open comments for people that want to weigh in. So a lot of this work is ongoing, but, and the specific things like, as Katie alluded to, like the work that we did in January, February, and March, where we came together, studied the research, et cetera. We'll go into a few of those things in a little bit greater detail here in just a minute. So I just want to go back and review quickly before we do that, though. I did want to just refresh everybody's memory on the five things that the board actually approved in the proposal itself with District Management Council. And that is codify the school's priorities and theory of action for serving students, review each school's program offering, use of time and schedules, review supports and services for struggling and gifted students, review the cost effectiveness of staffing, patterns, and practices, create and help implement a phased-overtime plan for continuous improvement. And so I'm going to turn it over to some of our principals and teachers who helped, we worked together to plan and facilitate these sessions with the task force members. So, go ahead.
One of the decisions that was made by the Teachers Council, along with initially Michelle Fitzgerald and with Dave Moyer, was that if we were going to have these study sessions, we thought it was, would be important that they were not led necessarily top-down, but instead they were done in a collaborative nature. So we decided that we would have three separate study sessions, each with certain focuses, FOKI, that we would be addressing, and the leaders of that group would be someone who was from the district office, an administrator from the district office, a principal, and also one, two, or three teachers from the mixed middle schools. Because we thought that would be very good to kind of show that we are working together and we're working in a collaborative nature to really get in-depth as to what we believed was important as we started this whole process. So the first session that we had talked about, we talked about as a group, as a task force, PLCs and effect size research.
So before I give the PLC recap, I just wanted to mention how, again, our purpose for the task force is, starts with defining the philosophy of what we really want our middle schools to be here in District 205. So during our first session, we agreed that PLCs are key to our philosophy. Professional learning communities focus on three big ideas and four critical questions. The three big ideas are to ensure that students learn, have a culture of collaboration, and focus on results. And the four critical questions are, what do we want our students to learn? How will we know if each student has learned it? How will we respond when some students don't learn? And then how can we extend and enrich learning for students who have demonstrated proficiency? So these ideas and questions also tie into true middle school philosophy, which focuses on being child-centered and needs-based. The basic structure of both middle schools and PLCs is to have collaborative teams with a common purpose to help every child learn to the best of his or her ability. Our mission as teachers is to help students be successful academically, socially, emotionally, and to prepare them to be a part of the global society. So PLCs and middle schools with middle school philosophy can help us achieve our mission.
And connecting to Michelle's discussion on PLCs, ensuring that students learn directly connected to our study of Hattie during our first session, we studied Sections of Visible Learning by John Hattie, where his book synthesized his 15 years of research. The major message of the book that we discussed is that he uncovered the barometer of what works best in classrooms, and we spent some time reflecting as teachers, the things that we had control over, and, among other things, on Hattie's findings. And we specifically discussed the importance of students reflecting on their own work, and the importance of teachers, and what feedback that we give them, and how that can really impact the growth of our students.
In our next session, we focused on student achievement objectives and assessment literacy, jumping off of feedback. We studied the work of Jan Chappuis and Dylan Willem, William, I keep, for a year we called him, called him Dylan Willem, and we realized when we had him in person that he actually pronounced it William, and we, as a district, will always call him Willem. So with Dylan William, which focused on the importance of feedback, clear objectives, and assessment throughout instruction. We also examined traditional grading versus standards-based grading and competency-based learning. This rich discussion was a great opportunity to reflect on our current practice and open the door to what could be.
Our last session that we most currently worked on was looking over middle school best practices, and Michelle is going to hand to you a copy of the book that guided our discussions. And so it's called This We Believe by Emily, The American Middle-Level Educators. And so I have marked the pages for you that kind of drove the most important pieces for us, so on the green tab, please, and then Dave, would you switch those? Thank you. So the This We Believe, it gave us a lot of good guiding principles and best practices and research by all of the years, and copies for Emily when she's able to make it. And so, Emily, we saved you one. And that we can take a look at all of this together. We really found, and I especially found this book fascinating, I've been in middle school for 17 years, and for something to kind of quantify all the things that I've believed in personally were fantastic, and it covered everything in this book to look at 16 different attributes and characteristics that were included in that that we needed to study to make sure we're providing a rich experience. So the essential attributes and characteristics we looked at, first of all, were developmentally responsive, so what is best for middle schoolers as they go on from young children from 11 and leaving out as, you know, into their pre-early teen years, as well as being challenging curriculum, empowering for students to be able to kind of level the playing field, reaching all of them as learners, and then more of an equitable experience to make sure that we reach students of all socioeconomic statuses across the district, to include all of that.
Okay, in addition to that, there are 16 essential attributes that are vital for middle school kids, and they fall under three areas, curriculum and instruction and assessment, learning, leadership, and then community. And I'm just going to take a quick minute here to talk about those, because tonight exemplified what happens in middle school carried on to high school. The time where kids can use the exploratories, we saw perfect examples of it tonight with the FCS, all the awards from high school. Where does it start? Middle school. It starts because we give kids the opportunity to explore industrial technology, family and consumer science, art, music. They get an opportunity there, and that's what middle school gives kids. It really gives them a broad opportunity to experience things, as well as it's very student-centered, very active, engaged with learners and teachers who are prepared to work and love middle school kids, because that's really critical to kids' success, is that we have staff who embrace the changes that comes with middle school. Because a lot of people, you mentioned middle school, and they, woo, no, we love middle school, that's why we're here, that's why we do what we do, it's important to us to do that. And so that's a very important and critical part of the curriculum instruction. It also ties in with the student assessment, that we're using ongoing assessments during our time to assess kids and help them and engage them in their learning. As far as leadership and organization, that we strive as leaders to provide a collaborative, caring environment, that we are up to date with best practices, and that we nurture and provide professional development and encourage our staff to join us collaboratively. And then finally, is the culture and, culture and community characteristics. This is probably one of the critical parts of that because we strive to make sure that we have an adult advocate for all learners. That's a critical part of middle school. It's essential that they have a trusted adult, and we work toward that. In addition to that, we try to build partnerships with community, with families, and with other individuals who are middle school people, and providing kids with a responsive environment in which we have guidance and social service support for our students. So that's really the core beliefs, and I am a firm believer in, I mean, I hope my passion shows through. I'm a firm believer in this, I believe this, and I'm going to turn it back over before I keep going. Turn it up for me.
So if you look at, if you just go back one second, Dave, if you look at that, in the essential attributes, each one of those in the book says for all students, for all students, for all students. all students, for all students, for all students." And I just think it's important to make that connection because what we're trying to do is bring everything back to our big ideas, and "all students" is one of our big ideas that we keep, try to keep at the forefront. And then the last three ideas, where you see all the words in parentheses, we took those concepts from the book, but then in a workshop kind of format, we had groups process, what does that mean to us? Well, how does this, you know, so we tried to make meaning out of those concepts. And if you look at the last one, I thought, you know, we had some arty people drawing pictures on one of the poster boards, but then the one word that they put on there was joy. And I thought to myself, for anybody who's ever been in middle schools, around middle school kids, I mean, they're just the greatest. And it's just kind of refreshing to have a group of people come together and say, who invented the rule that said school isn't supposed to be fun? You know? So it was really, that was really a nice day for everybody. And if you, we kind of set this up intentionally in that we tried to go kind of from broad to specific. So we started out with the big PLC ideas and the research, and then we said, okay, what are our student achievement objectives in this district? And then it was like, okay, what does this mean for middle school? So that was kind of the way we approached that. As far as the District Management Council issued its report, so I didn't go into a lot of detail on that, but I will go into a little more detail on the results of the actual parent survey. So 390 parents took the survey. And again, this will be posted on the web, and there will be an opportunity. The comment section was specific to the four opportunities that were identified in the study by District Management Council. The survey was specific to those four opportunities, which you'll see in a minute. There will be additional opportunities, which we'll talk about here for input, including an opportunity for some open comments on the website. Thirty-eight percent of the parents ranked instructional coaching as a top opportunity for a district to consider pursuing. The overwhelming majority of parents indicated that they would like the opportunity to learn more about these four opportunities. There were five general categories that emerged in the responses, which we'll cover in a minute. And then if you would just go to the next slide, this was the ranking, the percentage of people that ranked each opportunity first. So you see that 38% ranked instructional coaching first, 35% ranked interventions and enrichment first. But if you go to the next slide, you'll see that there was really strong support for all four. And in fact, if you look at school emotional support, we had a parent speak to the fact that many of our children feel a lot of stress in school. And I'm not 100% sure why the parents responded the way they did. We'll be going through each one of the different comments individually over time because there were a lot of comments. But even though they ranked coaching and interventions and enrichment on the other slide as the top opportunity in greater percentages, still, in terms of the percent of parents who said agree or strongly disagree overall, social-emotional support, 79% of the parents said that, and that was the highest number. So very interesting, at least to me, that stuck out as being very interesting. On the next slide, this is kind of a summary of the five themes that came out of the comments. Specific questions about the actual opportunity itself, specific concerns or considerations they wanted the task force to keep in mind, feedback on the perspective of whether or not the opportunity should be considered, so people would just kind of give their opinion. And then, because you could tell I can't see anymore, additional, I'll try looking up there, it might be easier, additional details on their child's experiences with the district, so people would go into more detail about their own specific child, and my child experienced this and that kind of thing. And then the request for more information, both by some of the specific comments themselves and also some of the, we made some inferences on this, too. There were some people that answered not sure in higher percentages than other to various different questions. And it could be because their child didn't experience that. It could be because they didn't completely understand what the opportunity was speaking to, but it did show that there was a desire for people to learn more about some of the various information that was included in the survey. So if you go to the next steps, we'll talk about that in just a minute. But I also want to, I want to reiterate that the final report and all this information, once again, will be on the website so that people have information to refer back to over time if they're curious. And there will be, as we'll talk about here in a minute, additional opportunities for parents at their individual building sites to be involved in a process to learn more about the study and to weigh in and give us feedback and input. So Michelle?
Thank you, Dr. Moore. The next steps for the middle school task force. The middle schools will each conduct a site-based parent night in order to clarify the middle school study, other issues, and work with the middle school task force in order to generate ideas for improvement and elicit feedback on any potential programming changes. Psychologists, counselors, and social workers will work with the district management council to improve efficiencies and identify strategies that will allocate more time for student contact. The middle school task force will work with the district management council in order to analyze scheduling, schedules for the 2017-2018 school year. And this school year, 2016, we'd like to work with the schools for improvement on how it'll provide interventions for students. The task force will monitor data as to inform future scheduling decisions. And the district will develop strategies in order to increase instructional coaching at all grade levels, kindergarten through 12. And just to kind of wrap things up, we just wanted to say that through the work of our middle school task force, we hope to strengthen what we're currently doing in our professional learning communities and improve upon ways to reach the individual needs of students while we're also working towards consistency across all three buildings. Every child in Elmhurst, no matter what part of town they are in, should have access to the same interventions, challenges, experiences, and opportunities. That's it.
Are there any questions from the board? Margaret?
First off, I want to say thank you. I have been waiting anxiously for this report, so thank you very much. And I think it's most important and it's most critical to hear from you. And I am so thankful that everyone, there is a representative from each school here because you know our students. You know our students, you know our community, you know what our expectations are. And I am relying on you to kind of guide and make direction. So this is very important. All of that being said, let me go back to a couple of, just, first off, start with very specific questions. 390 parents took the survey. Do you know percentage, what that is, what that looks like?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you can find the specific, there was, how many parents total were surveyed? You mentioned that at a meeting, do you remember?
Okay.
It was only about 10%.
Okay, that's statistically significant. So that is, that's the key point here, that it's statistically significant. So that is one thing I want to talk about. Another question, I want to dive in. There's been some discussion on the timing of the...
Oh, the study.
The study, the timing of the study. And I want to get, hear from you as the teachers, for those who are in the school, what impact, because I believe there was testing going on during that, what impact, what impact that had?
The, I just, yeah, I know that. But while I do want to, I do want to say, though, that not, I just want, not all teachers took this. So some of the teachers that were up here were not among the group that took this.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
That's fair.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I'm not necessarily a teacher. But you took the time study.
I did answer the time study. And it basically asked me for a full week what I did from when I start my school day and I come in at 7:30 and when I leave at four something. And so my whole day, it had a variety of options and then chances to fill in, then with descriptions of what we did on top of that. So they had general categories, just to probably make it easier for categorization, and then there were slots for each one so that we could further delineate and specify what we were doing, which was especially good for those of us in related services because our daily work doesn't really fit in very neat categories every day. So we had a wide variety of options that didn't really impact or interact. And we've done lots of time studies like this in the past, especially in special ed. We've done, we did them for years, so it wasn't anything different for our group, so.
Did, and if I can restate, did you see, was the timing, was there any challenges or irregularities with the timing based off what was going on in the school? Did you find that an issue?
I think, I mean, I think at Bryan, we might have had maps testing going on that week, so there might have been a couple of days. So that might have skewed a little bit of the data. I would say for, and it wasn't at all buildings.
Okay, thank you.
But they could go in and...
Oh, there was a drop-down option, apparently.
It was a drop-down option in, to, yes.
Yes, for those that were map testing that day, there was a drop-down option to explain what you were doing that day. So you could say you were testing that day, that it would explain why you weren't with a student that day.
Okay.
Or during that time, during that time period.
But maybe I can elaborate a little bit. One more, too. The way we work our testing is that we take a separate chunk of our day out, we do the testing as a large group, and then we have the rest of our nine-period schedule day. So deep down, we really weren't missing any, it wasn't really taking away because, yeah, we had that testing for an hour and a half, and then we went through every single rest of our subjects across the rest of the day for the period. So teachers still got to teach English, teachers still taught math, they still gave their own classroom tasks and that. So it wasn't any different. No scheduled day is ever perfect.
No, no, no. What? Okay.
Keep us on our toes.
I do have those numbers if you'd like. The survey email was sent to, only to the parents of middle schoolers, and it was delivered to 3,157 unique email addresses representing 1,999 students. Of the 384 responses received, 118, or about 31%, also have children currently in the high school at York.
Okay, so, thank you. There was one thing, there was one other, I guess, mention about the, the presentation, and this is a clarification, that presentation from DMC that the board reviewed. I don't think there was any approval in that presentation from DMC unless I've missed something. So it was, DMC made the presentation and the board reviewed it. And we're waiting on next steps, on what's going. I do have a specific question on your next steps that were, that was mentioned. I guess I am, I am curious on the, I don't know if there's a particular order that's based in these next steps, or as an example, I love the fact that you are continuing to go back to clarify information, so this is an ongoing process, this is not a one-time issue, so community is continually being involved. I love that. I might try to even sneak into one of those parent nights just to hear what's going on. I think that's excellent. A question on the idea of the district developing strategies to increase instructional coaching at all grade levels. How do you?
It's funny, you should ask that. We would very, very much like to see instructional coaches, not just with reading, but also with math. But that would also entail money. So that was one of the things that the DMC recommended, and I think we heard loud and clear from the parents and certainly from the teachers, we would love, love, love to have more literacy coaches, we would love, love, love to have more math coaches and just general instructional coaches. But again, that's going to cost money, and I think that's something that we should definitely engage the board and talk to you folks about because I think it's something that really has worked very well with the IT coaches, with the reading strategy coaches pushing in more from a literacy coach perspective. It's really the way to move forward. Looking at this, though, there was a pressure to stay somewhat cost-neutral, but looking at the recommendations, I don't know, I'll be the first to say, we would love coaches. We would love coaches at all three middle schools without a doubt. It would cost money for the school district, but I think it's money you would get back. When we asked, and we had parents in the group when we asked the DMC, we said, well, where would those coaches come from? They came right back to us and said, they're sitting right here. And they said, chances are good with your background, they said, we looked at your background and most of you are veteran teachers of 10, 15, 20 years, many of you have not only master's degree but potentially teacher leadership endorsements. And they put it out to us, the DMC, and said, how many of you would be interested in teaching, becoming a teacher-coach? And I would say 90% of the teachers raised their hands. So I think you have them, and you may actually be looking at some of them right up here, but it's just a decision, is that where you want to put your funds and are there funds available for that? Because I think we would absolutely love to engage in a dialogue about math and literacy coaches at the middle school level. I think at all levels, but certainly at the middle school because they've been so successful to date with the literacy coaches, reading strategy teachers, and the instructional or the IT coaches have worked out really well, so.
And then I promise, this is my last question. I note that there are plans to, it looks like, introduce some special goal for the 2016-2017 year. And my thought is, with it now being made, how achievable is that?
I think each, each one of the schools were working on that. We're going to come back with a recommendation next week at our meeting. So we're each going to meet with our teams and come back with a recommendation for that. So I think we're moving forward with that, and I think it's very doable. I think it's going to be very doable.
And that is a pilot.
It's a pilot.
Right, yeah, for the moment.
So as a clarification, so it may be something different at each school?
It could be.
It could be, okay.
Just initially. Well, it will give us a chance to try out things, and then we'll be able to come back and look at that and say what worked and what didn't, and give us the opportunity to learn from that. I think that's really going to be our first step, maybe.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I love the team effort, so thank you so much. I like the choreography, too. My questions are really around the next steps and the survey and getting more, what did the survey really tell us? So first off, Dave, I thought it was great that, you know, the way that your mind works is always looking at, what is this survey telling us? And how do all the pieces fit together? You know, is it really, you know, telling us the same thing in different places, which usually you find the treasures? So one of, one of those is with which you referenced, the anomaly potentially of the social-emotional support. And if I recall, when Shannon and I were the board members that attended the meeting with the task force, parents were present, two board members were asked to be there when DMC was presenting. And when, when we discussed the two high potentials as a employee group, was the same as the parent survey group came up, coaching and intervention and enrichment. But the social-emotional, Diane, if I recall correctly, specifically addressed that. Some of the things that, that they found out through working with our time studies, teacher and administration surveys, et cetera, or conversations, interviews, was that some of the things that we are looking to address in both the coaching and the intervention and enrichment phases, if those are the two top two, is that some of the social-emotional issues that we have heard from parents will be addressed. So, you know, I just want people to understand that they're, you know, that it's not a, maybe sequential, or just, you know, you get one thing without it providing some positive impacts in other areas, that we understand that there are issues.
I think that that is very important, that you point out that all four of these things generally are interrelated because... generally are interrelated because, you know, did parents answer that question because they think it's important, obviously, but maybe it's also one of the questions that they understood a little bit more what that might mean for their kid if they didn't understand something that was a little more technical about like, well, what does a coaching really mean or something? But, so we are trying to dig deeper, like I had said earlier, and try to figure out exactly what some of the comments meant. The summary statements, you know, are just kind of the general themes that emerged. But as it relates to your comment about the, how the things hang together, we know that interventions and enrichment opportunities for students are really important, but if we strengthen tier-one coaching or tier-one instruction with instructional coaches by improving, you know, continuing to improve the quality of our teachers, then, you know, maybe that's the best way to not have to worry as much about interventions in the first place. And maybe if the kids are doing better, they feel less stressed and they're happier and, you know, all those kinds of things. So they, they do all fit together. If we just look at this in terms of a structural fix, a lot of people have said things like, well, my kid goes to band, then they're in school all day, and then they go to track and then they got homework at night, you know, and, and that is very stressful for the kids. But if we just look at fixing the structure and we don't fix any root causes, we may not really be fixing the problem either. So it is, it's all, it's all hangs together.
So I really, I like the idea that you're having the parent night. So I, in my mind, it's kind of like another time where it's not just a survey, but it's to dig deeper and to get more informal, if you will, you know, ad lib off the cuff, focus group information to help us out. So I thought that was really good. I think that's it. Thank you.
I have two or three questions. First, given that so many parents responded that they'd like to learn more about those options, are those options that were asked in the survey going to be presented at the parent night and explained in further detail?
That, that's part of what that night would be about, yes.
Okay. Would, would there be value in, in re-administering at least part of the survey to those parents that attended parent night and then had a deeper understanding of what all those options were so that parents were able to make those decisions based upon better information?
Possibly.
Okay. That's something that, at least on the surface, seems worthwhile. And then my, my last question is, Katie, you said you felt you were under pressure to stay cost-neutral. Were there things that you just completely eliminated from a realm of possibility even though it would have a return on academic investment?
Not yet. No, not yet. In fact, one of our sessions, when we met, our, our second session that I presented with Michelle Fitzgerald, Gina Polgrieder, and Peter Ritchie and I, that was one of the times when we actually brainstormed with teachers, Jim, and we said, if the world was your oyster and you could have anything or everything that you've done in the past or you've seen other middle schools do in practice. And so we really brainstormed a lot of things. And, and talking about cost-neutral, the next steps, when they were presented to us as the group, we realized that some may be feasible to do potentially even within our scheduled day. When we looked at interventions, we looked at what the actual time that's spent on clerical duties by social workers and counselors and things like that. And we said, those are kind of things that maybe we could look at doing cost-neutral. When we looked at the coaches, I mean, there's no way to add instructional coaches without adding full-time staff. And so we realized that that was one of the concerns. So I guess going back to your original question, no, we've thrown out a lot of things, but really we decided on, let's look at what are potentially four major areas that we could affect going into next year and let's concentrate and hone in on those big ones.
Okay. And I ask that because, you know, of course, you recognize that, that each of the last few years, the board has approved a deficit budget. And however, I mean, we are, we collectively, the district, I believe we are in, in the business of delivering excellence. If there is excellence, if there's good ideas to deliver excellence, I think it's, it's your duty as the middle school task force to suggest those to the board, to suggest them to the community and let us as a community figure out what our priorities are and, and where they could fit or if, if, let us make the decision if we just can't afford them. Thanks.
No problem.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks again. This, this is great. Math curriculum development team. We have Dave Beatty.
Okay, Dave's just going to give us an introduction to what we can expect to hear a lot more about over the course of the next couple of years. So go, go ahead, Dave.
Thank you. Again, my name's Dave Beatty, I'm the EC-12 STEM Coordinator for District.
Dave.
Thank you. Again, my name's Dave Beatty, I'm the EC-12 STEM Coordinator for District 205. And I'm here to talk briefly about the math curriculum development process that's going to take place over the next year. You may recognize this, this image as D205's organizational objectives, and I'm calling it the rosette. Dave, Dr. Moore gave me a little bit of leeway to, to name it a little bit up here for my purposes. So I'm going to call it the rosette. And specifically, I'm looking at how we're connecting curriculum development and math to what the student objectives are, or the organizational objectives are for the district. So specifically, I'm looking at each of the petals of this rosette as levers that we can push against. And our math curriculum is going to be designed to push against these levers strategically so that we can raise the bar and close the achievement gap for all students. And that's something that was brought up earlier, that we're really focused on all students, so I really want to make sure that our math curriculum development is really focused on all students. Oh, sure. Yeah, that's great. There we go. Okay. So this image comes to us from the National Science Teachers Association. What they did is they took the transfer skills or the practices from each of the three, three of the major content areas, the core content areas, math, ELA, and science. You won't see social studies up here because the E3 standards for social studies hadn't been formally adopted at this point. But what we're looking at is, is the transfer skills or the practices from each of these content areas. And so some examples might be for math, reasoning abstractly and quantitatively, also for math and, and also English, construct viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others, reading, writing, speaking grounded in evidence, constructing explanations and designing solutions, coming to understand other perspectives and cultures through reading, listening, and collaborations. And the reason I put this up here is because these transfer skills, they are applied to different contexts and content and they're done over multiple years. And you can see from the graphic that we've got overlaps between the practices in these different areas from the different standards, sets of standards. And all of these have been adopted by, by Illinois, we call them the Illinois Learning Standards. Students who develop competence and transferability in each of these math, science, engineering, and language competencies over time are well-prepared to create their own futures after graduation. And our curriculum planting is targeted to developing these transfer skills in our students over time. They're connected between different content areas and these connections must live through our curriculum K-12. Life is not divided into math, science, English, language arts, and social studies, you know, practical arts, all the things we've been talking about tonight. Life is a messy mixture of these and other content areas. And students who are able to transfer skills from one content to another, those have increased capacity to realize their dreams. Transfer of these skills does not always happen naturally for all students and it must be intentionally embedded into our curriculum. So back to the rosettes. So developing our curriculum with the practice standards in mind pushes on multiple objectives from rigor to future-ready graduates to balanced assessment. Student engagement is an especially important ingredient in mathematics classrooms and one of two of the student objectives that the district has. The practice standards in mathematics define the transfer skills that develop over many years of mathematics instruction and must be intentionally transferred to other content areas. So for example, we've got asking the right questions, and that's framed differently in the practice standards, but I wanted to give it in some terms that we might understand better. So asking the right questions, modeling with mathematics, critiquing the reasoning of others, arguing with evidence, discovering and using patterns, these are things that transfer across content areas and these are major components of a mathematics curriculum. Over the past five months, I've conducted detailed research, looking at the strategies of other DuPage districts, leading districts from across the country and in our own classrooms. I observed nearly 100 D205 classrooms, K-12, and every school, to serve the extent that these practices are expressed in our classrooms. And without diving into the minutia of the details, one thing I've, what I've found is that we do spend time with students working with all of these. But I think we've not yet realized the full development of these skills through an intentional and great-appropriate practice, vertical articulation. The math curriculum development will focus on developing these skills over time intentionally and throughout all grade levels. Another thing we want to be thinking about, having strong goals in the practices and these transfer skills along with content area standards and mathematics, we need to have common unit assessments, which is another goal for curriculum development. We must also, we use these common assessments to measure the effectiveness of our instruction and to give our teachers the information they need to intervene and ensure all students develop grade-level proficiency, both in the practice standards and in the content standards. Curriculum development process will align our common assessments K-12 to ensure intentional vertical articulation. We're also going to be using the growth assessment work that we've been doing this year and incorporating that into our curriculum development. We were talking earlier about making sure that we're not over-testing, they're not just test, 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 and for different purposes, but that we take all the purposes for testing and we incorporate those into the curriculum so that way it's a seamless flow, that students have a pre-test in a unit, students have a post-test in a unit, those tests, items from those tests are actually used in the growth assessments and the work for para and other, other purposes so that it's all seamless. It's not separate test, separate test, separate test. So that's one thing we're going to be doing during the process. So one of the first things we do is we need to develop a conceptual framework and we're going to use the practice standards for mathematics to, as a base for that. But we also need to, through the conceptual framework, we need to define and actually simplify what all students need to know and be able to do by graduation. These goals help us prioritize, align, and focus our curriculum at every grade level to make sure that every student achieves these larger goals and they're based on the practice standards, standards as I mentioned before. This conceptual framework will be developed beginning with a community input event on Wednesday, the, May 25th, from seven to nine at the district office. We've invited parents, community leaders, teachers, administrators, and board members to the event, and we're going to be discussing the proposed conceptual framework goals and then asking for our community's input and their ideas. I believe in the last Talk 205 message came out with a, with a link, so if anyone's interested in signing up and RSVP-ing, please go to the Talk 205 and click on that link. Okay, so after the conceptual framework, on June 1st through 3rd, we're going to hold training for our curriculum development team members to ensure that each team understands curriculum developments and aware of current research in math education and becomes familiar with the curriculum documents that we're going to be creating. The team's composed of teachers from each grade level who will be responsible for developing their grades curriculum documents. And the teams have been chosen, chosen through an application process and throughout the next year, we'll, we will be doing vertical articulation work at the same time. So the actual curriculum building is going to take place over the next school year with teams meeting on flexible schedules that make every effort to prevent teachers from being pulled from their classrooms. That's something that's very important to us, that we keep teachers in their classrooms as much as possible. Those grade-level teams are going to be unpacking standards, they're going to be looking at building curriculum maps similar to what we see for the ELA curriculum, and they're going to be building units and later on identifying resources which we'll bring to the board. And then we'll be doing training the following summer. And so this final curriculum is going to help District 205 ensure that all students are going to be prepared for college, career, and life. And that's it.
Okay, I have one. I have one. Thinking of elementary, more for the elementary teachers because they are teaching all courses, the ELA curriculum we finished and that will be launched next year and this will overlap that. How, how can we make sure that we can manage that workload? It's a, it's a lot of work, which is great work, it's, it's just a lot at one time.
Are you asking about implementing two curriculum at the same time or, or developing one while implementing another? Okay. So there are, there is some overlap in between the teams that are going to be developing math and the, clearly the teachers that are implementing ELAs, all the elementary teachers are implementing ELA, some of them will be helping us develop math. So there will be some overlap there and those teams are going to be paid per the contract to do the curriculum development work outside of the school day. I don't see a lot of, I guess I don't see a lot of overlap between those roles because they'll be asked to be doing those things in different times, but I'm not the best person to ask about the ELA curriculums. Maybe, Michelle?
I could speak to that. You, you bring up a great point, a point that we like to think about a lot. Our K-5 teachers teach every core subject. So when we're rolling out a new curriculum every year, we are asking them a very tough job of basically almost being like a first-year teacher again with that curriculum. And so what we're trying to do is to be proactive. So we've already done some ELA curriculum development this, I'm sorry, professional learning this year. We're starting with some math. We've already offered some courses on the math practices and on number sense so that when we are ready to roll out or implement the math curriculum, this wouldn't be drastically new to everybody. And then as we're rolling it out, there'll be a lot of support through institute days, late arrival work, and the D205 university courses. So it's about being proactive, offering the courses early, building capacity of many staff members in developing the curriculum so they understand how curriculum is developed and what resources we use. The more people we get on that, the overlap is nice. It's nice to have people that have done the ELA curriculum on math because they understand the curriculum development. It's nice to bring new people in so that we're building capacity of, of a lot more of our teachers. And then being very strategic and offering support in the implementation year through the summer courses, courses during the school year, late arrival, Sipit Institute Day. So we are fully aware that it will be, it's difficult for a K-5 teacher with a new curriculum every year.
Can I add to that? So we are talking to the teachers and saying, you know, feedback and the two-way and all that sort of stuff about, you know, how doable is it and all those sorts of things? Is that what you're saying?
We, we always talk to our teachers, you know, when we roll out the ELA, when we implement the ELA curriculum that's coming up here, it will give us an indication of how that's rolling out. ELA is a little bit more difficult of a class, it's a bigger class, there's so much more to it than a math or a science, not that math and science association is not as important, just ELA encompasses so much more. And so it'll be interesting to watch it and see. And we will talk to the fifth grade, I have not, or to the K-5, I have not kept anything secret from K-5 that a new curriculum is like being a first-year teacher again. It's, it's like having to learn something new. However, we have top-notch teachers and this is not drastically new. They've been teaching very well for a long time. This is not drastically new. And so I think that they can handle it, but we certainly will. We, we get feedback after institute days, principals stay in touch with us, we talk to the principals, we'll, we'll have a good handle on it.
I have one last question. So if you answered this question, I apologize, but is it going to be So, if you answer this question, I apologize, but is it going to be that next year is the only year, I mean, and it rolls out next year and that's it, or is it over a two-year period? Did I miss that? Okay.
In traditionally, what you would see when you talked about curriculum development cycles, it really wasn't always as much about curriculum work as it was about whose subject turn it was to buy books. And so, you'd kind of study textbooks, and it wasn't that you didn't do curriculum work, but it really, well, what we're, what we're trying to do now is, through a PLC model, get into a continuous improvement kind of mindset. So, once we have our basic curriculum, and once we have our open resources, we're not really going to be doing things in fits and starts just because it's time to buy a textbook. Once we get some of these foundational things in place, through the PLCs, it will be always ongoing, continuous dialogue about our curriculum, and so, the revisions will be going on annually.
Thanks.
Okay. We have health and dental insurance presentation.
Yes. Under item C in the consent agenda, we have the health and dental insurance renewal. We have Jan Kleinley from Hub International here. Jan works with the insurance committee all year long, and she's going to present the renewal.
Good evening, everybody. And it's just this to the right? Okay, thank you. Okay, what I'm going to be talking about is the 2016 renewal. We're making a little bit of a change this year on the open enrollment. I'll talk about that a little bit more in the next slide, but the good news is, is based on the claims this past year, trends in the fixed costs, we're looking at a 4.2% increase on the PPO and a 6.2% increase on the HMO. So, back in 2014, we introduced a high deductible health plan, and historically, we've always run July to July, so we've done open enrollment in May for July 1st renewal. When we introduced the high deductible health plan, we had a November open enrollment for a January 1st effective date, because the high deductible health plan has a high deductible. Deductibles run on calendar year, even if the plan runs a July, so the deductibles always reset in January. So, to prevent people from signing up for a high deductible health, health plan in July, accumulating towards a $2,600 deductible for six months, and then starting over again in January, we had the high deductible health plan start in January. So, we do the PPO and the HMO and the dental in July, and then the high deductible health plan, we introduced a vision recently, and the flexible spending, we do that on a January. It's, it's caused some confusion, it meant that teachers and staff would have to go to two different sets of open enrollment meetings, so what we've decided to do is to roll it into one open enrollment. So, we do need to renew in July, we're going to do a short plan year, and then in January, we will have everybody going forward be on a January to December plan year. Okay? Make sense? So, a little bit of how we came up with our percentage increases, we have current versus prior on the claims, you'll see the gross medical claims on the PPO, and, and I should state that underwriting runs claims from February 1st through January 31st, and they look at a current year and a prior, and a prior year. So, gross claims were actually down 11%, gross medical claims, the prescription claims were actually up 8.3%, and the gross claims, the medical and the prescription together were down eight, with a net decrease of 2.6%, because that's, that's the claims before the stop loss. So, we did have some stop, stop-loss claims, so the stop-loss carrier did reimburse for some of the claims that were over the stop-loss deductible, so the net claims were 9 million versus 9.2 million, so going down 2%. However, our average enrollment was actually down 3.2% on the PPO plan, so if you look at the PEPY per employee per year, we were actually about flat or up 0.6%. On the HMO, the medical claims were actually relatively flat or down less than a percent. Prescription drugs were up 43%, and that's, that's an issue we're having in our industry right now, is prescription drugs are skyrocketing. And then, the total gross claims are up a little over 7%, and then the net claims, and then that's the claims after the stop-loss reimbursements, are 10.4%. You can see the average enrollment on the HMO is actually up 9.5%, so again, if you look at it, look at it on a per employee per year, we're relatively flat or just under This is, this shows the renewal fixed costs, so your administration fee, we played a Blue Cross Blue Shield, the stop-loss fee we pay to the stop-loss carrier, the PCORI fee and the transitional reinsurance fee, those are Affordable Care, Affordable Care Act fees that we are responsible for. So, you'll see on the PPO, we're up almost 10% on the fixed costs, and then on the HMO, we have some capitation fees in there, so the physicians' fees, the managed care fees, again, the stop-loss fees, et cetera. We're actually down a little bit on the fixed costs on the HMO, and then on the dental, we're flat. Large claim history, on the prior, you can see we had 27 claims over the 50,000 mark. This year, we had 29, however, the total dollars are actually down from 42 down to 4.2 million down to 3.2 million. And large claims on the HMO, we're a little over half a million to almost 600,000. So, these are the three-tier rate renewal, and by three tiers, so the tiers are your, an employee only, an employee plus one, which is either you and a spouse, or you and one child, and then employee plus two or more, so that's employee plus a spouse and one child, or employee plus two or more children, et cetera. And then, special switches for teachers, the two teachers that work in the, in the district together, they have a special rate for them. So, on the PPO, you can see the rates were not 4.2%, and again, the high deductible or the HSA, that doesn't renew until January, so no increase for this July renewal. And then, the Blue Advantage HMO, up 6.2%, and the HMOI, up 6.2%. And this is for this, again, the six-month period, these will re-set in January. The four-tier rates, the teachers have, are moving to the four-tier rates, and I think we're looking at, some of the other are going to migrate as well. So, we go from employee, employee plus one, employee plus two or more, to, and this is more standard in the industry, your employee, or your employee plus spouse, or your employee plus one or more children, or your full family, which is you, your spouse, and one or more children. And you can see, because of the switch from the three to the four tier, some of the tiers are going up, some of the tiers are going down, but you can see it's going to be an overall of 4.2 and 6.2 on the HMO. And this is showing the overall dollars and the head counts, the first July 2015 through June 2016, is the course of the year we're just coming out of. The middle column is that short plan year, but the numbers are annualized, and then the last column of, is the estimate of, once we reset the numbers in January for, for the next plan year, we estimated a 3% increase on that, for a total overall, one-year increase of about 7.5%. And what meeting would be complete without a talk about the Cadillac tax? So, the good news on the Cadillac tax is, it was going to be in 2018, it was recently pushed to 2020. So, just a reminder of what the Cadillac tax is, is it's, it's a way to help fund the Affordable Care Act, and it's a tax on, it's supposed to be a tax on richer plans. So, they have a threshold of premiums, and if your premiums are over that threshold, and it's 10,200 a year, or 850 a month for single, and about 27,000 for family, so if you're over that threshold, you're going to pay a 40% tax of the amount you're over that threshold. So, for example, on the 850 for single, if your premium is 900, you're going to pay a tax on the difference between the 900 and the 850, you're going to pay a 40% tax on that $50 difference, times the number of people that have single coverage. Okay? So, right now, the 2016 PPO rates are sitting at almost 94% of that threshold on the single and 95, a little over 95% on the family. The HMO is only at 61%, single, 65% family, I don't have the high deductible, but it's running right around the HMO, HMOI. So, it's around 68% and 70%, but your HMOs are in good shape, your PPO is approaching the Cadillac tax. So, what we did here is, we estimated a trend of 8%. So, last year, you were at 14% overall, this year, you're looking at 7.5% overall, so that 8%, you know, could even be low, we don't know. So, what we said is, is take your rates, project them out to 2020 by adding an 8% trend, and in 2020, Elmhurst on their PPO plan will be paying over $1 million in Cadillac tax just for the PPO plan. The high deductible health plan is 9,000, and these are based on current head counts. HMO Blue Advantage won't pay the Cadillac tax with these assumptions, and HMO Illinois will not pay the Cadillac tax. 2021, you're looking at almost 1.4 million on the PPO, and 31,000 on the high deductible, nothing on the HMO. 2022, you're looking at 1,700, almost 1,800 on the PPO, 65,000 on the high deductible, and nothing on Blue Advantage, but now your HMO Illinois starts to hit it, again, with our assumptions. Any questions?
One question on just a small number in here. On your fixed costs, it seems like the stop-loss coverage is up the most out of anything.
Yes.
And that's experience-rated, or?
Yes.
Okay.
You're, you're, you're running at 130% of premium.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, how many years does it take to adjust based upon experience? If we have a good year, does that go back down?
Yes.
As quickly?
Yes. And we, we carve out your stop-loss, your stop-loss is with Blue Cross, so we tried to get a quote from Blue Cross to try to leverage it. They won't quote, they, they wouldn't quote you this year.
They know too much about us.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks.
I did try to negotiate the other one down, too, and they said at 130%, we just, we have no room. So, we tried.
So, clearly, the spirit of the Affordable Care Act and the implementation of this Cadillac healthcare tax is to discourage any organization from providing a health plan that is that rich. What are our options? Because I don't think the board has really any interest in paying a Cadillac healthcare tax.
Right. Well, we need to start making some plan changes. One thing that they did in negotiations is, the, the PPO plan is obviously the one that's at most risk, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what we're doing is with teachers, they cannot, they have to go into the high deductible health plan or one of the HMOs if they're hired after January 1st of 2016.
Not sure.
No?
I don't remember if that is the case or not.
Okay. Well, then let me address, let me address the exact question. So, obviously, we need to make some plan changes to get the premiums down.
Is that something you're, you're looking at for our district and?
What we're going to do is, we're going to look at it at the next, the January renewal.
Okay.
That's, because once we, once we go through the, once we go through the next renewal, we'll be on a complete January renewal. If we made plan changes now on the PPO, there, the deductible would accumulate for six months, and then they have to start over again in January, so once we're on a calendar year, it'll be much easier to make the plan changes. Validable.
Thank you.
Yeah, my question was around the Cadillac tax, too. If you go to that slide, it's, you're talking about 90-some percent. Where do we really want to be? First question. Second, is that we're working with the insurance committee to, you know, with your input, how do we transition? So that not only does a board and community not want to pay, you know, the government versus the employees don't want to pay the, the government, we'd rather, you know, keep it in-house, basically. So, I would think that that's kind of what everybody's strategy is, so.
Right. So, what we'll do is, when we, when we put together the renewal for the, for January, we'll come with three suggested, three optional plan designs, and we will show the effect on the Cadillac tax based on our projections, and then that goes to vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jen.
Shall I deliver the, given the hour, should I deliver the very abbreviated report, or shall we just bounce it to a later meeting, since we don't have any of the policies to be approved? I guess.
We can wait. Let's wait till the next meeting.
Well.
Unless there's something that's time-sensitive.
We do need, the only thing we do need to do is, we do need to put the first and second readings on the next two board meetings, because some of them need to be, go into effect with the next school year.
Do we need the, well, then, let me be.
Well, I mean, it's, it's up to you how you want to handle it.
Let me give you the, let me, let me give the abbreviated report, then. The policies that we considered, most of which came out, or virtually all came out of press, reflect statutory changes. They don't reflect any of the big ideas that were talked about tonight, but they reflect that places where federal and state law had changed and policy had to track. Among the specific items that were tracked was concussion awareness, search and seizure issues relating to technology and obtaining access to personal technology as part of school investigations. The biggest thing is the state statute, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, on some of this, but the biggest thing that we considered were all the policy changes related to the new student discipline procedures. There is a best-practice philosophy that's gaining popularity, and the, the new statute reflects it, that removal from school now needs to be related to threat, to safety or disruption, it's no longer used as a punishment. What Kathy pointed out at our meeting is that our district has been heading in that direction already, which is a, you know, more considered a best practice. Expulsion has particular procedural requirements to be addressed. And then, finally, depression-suicide awareness was also tracked in our policies. But those should appear, and if anyone has any questions, it's kind, you know, I think we can handle those outside the hearing, given the late hours and the things that are still on the agenda.
Learning and Teaching Committee.
I guess we should offer the same. We could deliver a very abbreviated version, or defer to another meeting if you'd like, whatever the board wishes.
The, the minutes from this meeting, this was a meeting that we really talked about MLI, which we then brought to the full board last April, or last, in April, are we still in April?
We're, we're in May now, but we met on April 5th.
It's 10 o'clock. So, we did, it was just that the minutes didn't get in with the board. So, I, you know, we've already discussed a lot of this at the big board.
I think we've pretty much covered it.
Correct.
Okay.
Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Would any board member like to remove an item? Okay. I need a motion.
I move we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay. Moved by John, second by Jim.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
She's there.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. That motion passes. Superintendent's Action Items.
The first action item is related to approval of the bookstore operations, and it was presented at the last board meeting, and there is a thorough rationale provided for you in the packet, much of which was explained at the last meeting, and then here in some greater detail. So we would ask for a motion to approve this so that we can move forward with planning to close out this school year and get the new school year off the ground effectively and efficiently.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract with Beck's Bookstore for management services for bookstore operations with an annual management fee of $60,000. This contract will run through September 30, 2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by John, second by Jim. Any discussion?
Margaret.
Yeah. I know there was a couple of questions around the bookstore, and I guess I'll, I'll start with those questions that might be most interesting from a parent perspective. And the first question is, what this change from the bookstore as it was, was set up before to Beck, how that will look for parents, both when they are doing the registration and in the general operation? So, you know, how they buy tickets, if they need to go and buy any York memorabilia. What, what changes could we see or expect?
I think, I think the noticeable changes will be minimal. The majority of the changes would be internal, operational. I think that they would notice more efficiency because we'll have a more, a computerized system, for example, that I think is a little bit more modernized. And also, I believe that there are times where they may notice other conveniences related to the timeliness of getting books in with orders, the ability to order online, and do different things that we expect to be able to move to, if not immediately, over a period of time. And then also, because we think that, that this retailer may have the opportunity to help with some pricing, I think that, that there could be some benefits to the, to the families and in the, from the pocketbooks standpoint, too. And I know, Chris, you've had a lot of particular conversations with Chris, and Chris is back now as well. I don't know if you want, if you want to add to that or not, but I, I don't believe that they will. I mean, you're always going to make minor tweaks in different things anyway, so there, who knows that York wouldn't have done something a little bit differently next year, now that we have a better handle on Chromebooks and everything else. But she asked how much, like, the impact on the parent, that, you know, how much they would notice differences in purchasing or, you know, different types of things related to maybe buying memorabilia or other types of things like that.
For the most part, it's not going to be noticeable. We're, we're, when we did the RFP, we, we did it in a way to keep the onsite campus, or the onsite campus bookstore. And Beck's is going to sell the same, the same products or tickets, the same way that, you know, they're going to have better technology with a POS system, that sort of thing, barcoded transactions, as opposed to the cash registers, but, so faster, faster service, customer service, that sort of thing. But it's, we're, we're continuing to have the bookstore at York.
Can I just add a piece to that, too? You know, one of the things, and Chris was nice enough to kind of loop me in as we kind of went along and keep me in the loop on what was going on. And, you know, one of the things that became very clear, clear was, was a desire to kind of do as little violence as possible as the experience, to not force people to change process too quickly. And I guess I thought, it wasn't just you. It was Drew and Adrian, and, I mean, there was, the high school was involved in the, in the conversation. And Drew, I think the last thing I asked was, Drew, are you comfortable with this? And really had a, had a big input in this. But that was part of the reason why I think Chris said, you know, he picked Beck's, was, as a group picked Beck's, because they were the only one that offered that human option and connected to the technology piece, so that you did have the on-the-ground presence. The other option was one in which you didn't. It was all online. And, you know, that could be a future state at some point in time, but right now, you know, again, to try to keep the customer experience, to improve it, but to not to change it radically. You know, I think the other piece of it, too, is that you're going to find, and particularly given the discussion that Dr. Covino had, is an additional resource that these folks provide around digital textbook discovery, pricing, investigation, but also some of the dynamic texts and the, and the content that's out there, to be able to assemble into these, these dynamic textbooks, or kind of piece by piece, or cobbled together things. And so it adds parent resource, but it also adds teacher resource, too, which, you know, I think what you do is you take the existing experience, you, you add technology to it with an online bookstore, a mobile app where you can order from, access to multiple marketplaces for the textbooks, so a broader, you know, broader market. And you ramp that all into a system that hopefully improves on what we have now without discarding it.
Thank you. And then, one last question. I know I thought it was mentioned that Beck was chosen by both Glenbrook North and South, and I'm just wondering if you've heard any feedback from them about their service.
I did speak with the Glenbrook High School, and they're very, very happy with, with Beck's. Glenbrook used to have Follett be their provider, and they switched to Beck's, and they, they like Beck's and the service that they provide a lot better. And they renewed their contract now with Beck's for an extension.
Sorry. Are, are either of those schools on one-to-one?
Yes. They went one-to-one three years ago.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
They're actually, Beck's is doing a lot of the stuff that our technology department is doing with the Chromebooks and, and servicing them and that sort of thing. We're not doing that. We have the TSI program and the technology department doing the repairs on the Chromebooks. But at, at Glenbrook, Beck's was, is doing that for them also.
From reading through the, the report, it seems like the, their, the customer experience and convenience will definitely improve. It seems like there'll be more used books offered. One thing I read that, that concerned me a little is that the, our standard policy is to, is to return 70% or buy a book back for 70% of the purchase price. And in here it says no less than 50%. Do you think that's a significant change to our current procedure? Would people expect to get less than 70% back very often or on a consistent basis?
Well, I hope not. But it is 50% of the price that they pay, and we're hoping that the price, the purchase price is going to be less through buying more used textbooks and using their different resources they have to provide used textbooks. But the problem is the, the market value on, on printed textbooks is, is decreasing, because less and less, there's less and less demand for printed textbooks.
Right.
So I think that factors into it.
All right. And then, will the hours that, that the York bookstore is open, would they increase? Because my understanding, and I, and I don't have all the details today, that there's at least a couple of lunch periods that, that it's not open. Would the hours, customer service hours improve for the students so they can access the bookstore during all of the lunch hours that we provide?
Well, initially, we thought we were going to try and continue what we're doing now. And as Beck's gets in there, maybe they're going to find ways to provide a better service and, and change the hours around, maybe close down when the kids are in class and open up during lunch. That, that definitely is a thing that, that I think Beck's wants to explore, ways that they can improve the service. But initially, I think we're going to start with the same hours, and, and I think they're going to work with the York administration to see how they can do things better.
Okay. And net, net, does this take the, as you say, the, the market for paper textbooks is declining. Does, does this proposal take that financial risk out of the hands of the district and out of the hands of our parents largely?
I guess, can I ask, and maybe this is, who owns that inventory? Do we own the inventory now, or does Beck own the inventory of books that are purchased? Or is there any inventory that's owned?
And I just ask that because that might be a part of.
They, they will be owning the textbooks. But we will be selling them, the, the inventory. So that, in the next week or two, we're going to have a big buyback, where all of those textbooks are going to be purchased back, and those parents will all have credits. And Beck's is going to purchase that inventory from the district.
So that becomes Beck's inventory, not District 205's inventory?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I was getting at.
Just real quick on the math, it gets back to, so it's their inventory. They'll give us a market price for it when we sell it back to them, and that's what you get. The issue with the 70% was, is we buy a book, and we buy it back for 70% of retail new. And then we would price that book at that same price when we sold it next year, and bought that back at 70%. And we never marked our inventory to market, so the parents always paid 70% of whatever they paid, somebody paid last year. Now, we're selling this to Beck's at the end of the year, and then every year when we buy books, we're buying them based upon the best market price out there. So even though you might only get 50% of what you paid back, you're going to be paying market price for those books, not 70% of whatever they paid last year, which is the way that all worked.
Without going through the math, it's, it's kind of a total cost of ownership model, right? I mean, as, as Dr. Covino put on the board, you know, what is the net cost after all those buybacks to buy books for your kid at York for four years?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that, that's what I'm concerned.
Yeah. Well, your, the bottom line is, where you're losing the 70% buyback, the 50% buyback's going to come off of, hopefully, a lower starting price. Like Chris said, we're going to have advantage of, of better buying, and it is going to hopefully ultimately save our parents money.
Only question that I had is, is about the beginning of the school year and that experience. You're trying to just, you know, mimic or improve the buying experience for beginning of school year at York with this company?
Yes. They're going to set it up in a similar way, but, but they should, the plan is to have more efficient lines and transactions being processed. Hopefully, they're going, they're going to try and work out the bottlenecks. It might not be this year, I mean, I think, I think this year will be faster than, than last year, but it, you know, the following year, I think they're going to, with, with their experience with bookstores and their, their management experience, that they're going to find ways to do this better. Each and every year will get better. The first year, you know, they've never done a York Books sale before. It might not be quite as fast, but I do think that the following year will be much faster.
Right. And they've done it for other schools, so they know the process and that sort of thing.
Yes. They've experienced this at both Glenbrook North and Glenbrook South for three or, I don't know how many years. But there, I, I do think that they will have a plan to, to do it better than, than we've done it before.
Yeah, Chris, I'll add, I mean, if, if they can work out the data issues, the privacy issues with the exchange, we can share the, the course selections, and it actually can pre-populate the list, so when you log on, it's got the books for the courses you're in. It's, it's those kinds of things that technology is going to enhance. It may not happen the first year, but at, at a minimum, it should run, because of the online and some of the technology, the first year should run better than it did in previous years, and then can, and improve from there.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. Motion passes. We have one donation tonight. Sure. I'll move. I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Jackson School PTA in the amount of $950. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Okay. This, this is a very thoughtful way to honor the Shea family with their fourth grade student, and I'm very appreciative of the Jackson PTA for, for doing this. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Good. Seven ayes, no nays. The motion passes. Superintendent's Communication.
Yes. One thing, the, people are throwing a lot of numbers around lately, and there really is no indication whatsoever which numbers will stick to which degree as far as it comes to any potential school funding scenarios for next year. But one of the latest with the Maynard bill, if that were to pass, Elmhurst would lose over $4 point million dollars next year, close to 4.7. I don't think it will pass, but I don't think anybody can really predict what's going to happen. I'm just making sure that, that the information is out there, that you know that that's one of the scenarios that's currently being tossed around and discussed in Springfield. And then.
I think it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It did get approved today in the Senate, and so now that bill has moved on to the House.
And so we should be, we should be advocating. We should pay attention to this bill. It's similar to SB 1, which we didn't like. And there was a lot of community advocacy, especially in DuPage County, because it's not, it's not good for our students. And so I would ask our, our community to really investigate and look at, you know, what you think, and, you know, advocate by contacting our legislators that represent us and our students and our education system here.
This is the one that freezes property taxes. No, this is the reallocation bill. Sorry.
This is reallocating general state aid. It's Senate Bill 231 that passed the Senate today, and now it's on, now it goes to the House.
Okay. And then the only, the only other thing I wanted to say is I wanted to thank all of our presenters. I think a lot of good presentations, a lot of good information. I'd like to thank the only. Like to thank the only member of the middle school task force presenting team who managed to stick out the full duration of the board meeting. I don't know exactly what that says about you, but thank you anyway, and to all the rest of our presenters. And that's it for me.
Board Communications. Are we gonna? Well, I don't know if we, at this time. I don't know. Do you think we should talk about TIF? I don't think we said. Okay. So, I was going to bring up, you know, the, a TIF discussion and have the board pose questions, and I, I think we should wait till the next meeting, just based on the time.
Maybe just give a little bit of facts of what's afoot, but recognizing that we don't have the ability to have a, a full discussion this time, and that we would be looking for.
Okay.
Facts to, regarding the nature and the rationale for the proposal.
The, the city met with Dave and me last Friday to talk about the possibility of starting a new TIF district in Elmhurst, and we don't have numbers and values and really any information. It was just an informational meeting, and tonight, I believe, the city is talking about this for the first time. So, it's all new information, and what, I think our best step is the next board meeting to list of questions that we need, the information that we need from the city to, to have a discussion about their proposal, or when, you know, one of the questions is when would we see a proposal? So, we just don't really have any information right now, but I think in the next two weeks, we, we will get some, and then we can discuss it. I guess, when's our next meeting? May 24th? May 24th? Any other discussion on this? Okay, action on closed session items.
I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the new job title of Communications Coordinator be assigned to Kathy Schrader effective June 1, 2016, with a base salary of $60,507.98.
Okay.
I second?
Okay, moved by Jim, seconded by Margaret. Let me just, go ahead, yeah.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Ms. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion passes. Upcoming meetings, May 23, Finance Committee Meeting, 7:30. May 24, our next Board of Education Meeting. June 9, Learning and Teaching Committee Meeting, 6:15. There are two special meetings coming up in June for Superintendent Evaluation, June 13, and the next one is June 23, and then our Board of Education Meeting, June 14. We are at the end of the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second. Moved by Karen, seconded by John. All in favor?
Aye.